Good afternoon. Regular session, Mayor and City Council meeting, 6:00 PM, Wednesday, May 4, 2022, City Hall Complex. I call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, will you please read this pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, where nations under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have anybody on call to the public? We don't? Okay, with that, Councilman Diaz, will you do me the honor of reading the proclamation, please?
My honor, Mayor. Proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Nogales, Arizona, declaring the 53rd Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, May 1 through May 7, 2022. The office of the professional municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists through the world and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants and whereas the public of the professional municipal clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels and whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. Whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state provisional, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk, now therefore I, Arturo R. Garino, Mayor of Nogales, Arizona, do proclaim that the week of May 1 through May 7 as Professional Municipal Clerks Week and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk, Letiza Robinson, and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent.
Leti! And Leti, this is for you. Thank you, Councilman.
Sure, thank you, Mayor.
And with that, Leti, you get one week Cancun.[218.12][218.12](Laughter) Paid by the city manager.[223.12][223.12](Laughter) All right, we'll continue. All right, number four. Presentation A, Presentation of Audit for FY 2021-2022. Mr. Dickey?
Yes, Dennis? We've got our auditor here that's going to present this to us. That's Dennis Osich with, that I don't know, I'm too new to know who he's with, but he can tell us who he's with and everything, but he's going to give us the presentation. There he is. And go ahead, Dennis.
Good morning, Council.
President.
All right, there we go. All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. So Dennis Osich, Principal with Clifton Larson Allen, and we performed the audit for the year ended June 30, 2021. So I just want to go through, talk about the results of the audit, and then just be available for any questions that you may have. Just a note that the audit reports themselves will actually go on to a future action item. There was a new state law that was passed, I think back in September, October, where the audit reports have to go as an action item approved by council, but we wanted to present tonight, and that way we could open it up for questions that you might have, but it'll be on another future agenda item for that. So the reports that you have, you've got the governance communication, which is ultimately what I'm doing here tonight. This is the communication that we do with governance, because we work with management on a day-to-day basis when we're performing the audit, but ultimately, we work for you, the council members, and so we want to make sure that we're reporting back to you. And so that's what I'm doing here tonight. The annual financial report, that's the most significant item in there, which is the financial statements themselves and the related notes to the financial statements, which I'll go and talk about in a little bit. The single audit report, the highway user revenue examination report, and then we have the annual expenditure limitation report. So just to give you an idea of what the audit looked like, so we had about two weeks of preliminary work. We did one week off-site, and then we did, I say one week, but it was a few days that we did onsite in August of 2021. And then our final field work was two weeks completely off-site, mostly in December. There was wrap-up in March and April. There was just a delay, there was a change in the actuary for the other post-employment benefits, and so that report was delayed in getting issued, which ultimately held up the housing audit, and because we refer to the housing auditors in the city's financial statements, we have to wait until that report's issued before we can actually issue the city's report. So that was a little bit of the delay on that. No onsite work. We actually have a secure portal that we utilize, where we're able to make specific requests to city management, and they're able to upload that information. I had a meeting with Dennis earlier today. We met, was talking about the upcoming audit and what that's going to look like. So we are planning to be onsite for preliminary work and final field work, but it's going to be a little bit of a mix of doing it remotely and onsite. It seems to be that way, and when we're onsite, we're really able to either, one, look at information that's, you know, a lot of information that needs to be scanned and uploaded if we were to do it remotely, but we're also able to, you know, address some of the questions or issues or, you know, more important things onsite with management. So just to give you an idea of what the budget looks like, we actually incurred about 480 hours in performing the audit. We budgeted about 490, so we're pretty close to being on budget with that. So real quickly, just looking at these reports, so as I mentioned, the governance communication, it's what I'm doing here tonight, but some of the things that we talk about in there is some of the significant estimates related to the financial statements. When preparing the financial statements, a lot of the numbers are numbers that can be confirmed or specifically identified, but there are numbers in there that are estimates, and some of those estimates are the fair value of investments, the useful lives of capital assets are obviously is an estimate, the pension and OPEB are based on reports from actuaries. Those are all estimates that go into the financial statements. We do, as part of the audit, look at the underlying data related to those estimates to determine that those amounts are properly stated, but we do need to disclose to you that those are estimates that are in the financial statements that you'll see. We had no issues with management. Like I said, there was a little bit of a delay in the audit. Part of that was just the actuarial report, so there was a delay, and you'll see that in some of our, in one of our findings as well. And then the annual financial report, we issued an unmodified or a clean opinion on that, so what that's stating is that the financial statements are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The other reports we issued was a single audit report. Within the single audit report, and I'll go into a little bit more detail on this in a couple slides, but we issued two reports in there. One is what we commonly refer to as the Yellow Book or GAS report. That's the Government Auditing Standards Report. We do not give an opinion in that report, but rather, we report on internal controls. So if we had any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies related to the financial statements, they would be included in that report. The second report is what we refer to as the UG report, the Uniform Guidance Report. This is where we give an opinion on compliance with the major federal programs that we looked at, and then we report on controls over compliance related to those federal programs. So no opinion on the controls, but we do give an opinion on compliance. The HERF examination report, we issued an unmodified or a clean opinion on that. What that is, is all cities and towns get highway user revenue monies through the state, and these monies are restricted to use by Arizona statute. And so we test a sample of accounts payable, we look at payroll disbursements, we also look at funds being transferred out of that HERF fund, to determine that they're within what statute says they can be used for, and so we were able to issue a clean opinion on that. And then finally, the annual expenditure limitation report, again, we issued an unmodified or a clean opinion. What that opinion's saying is that the report is reported in conformance with the uniform annual expenditure reporting requirements, but also as part of that, in determining that it's properly reported, we're looking at what's reported as additions, subtractions. Ultimately, what the annual report does is it takes the financial statements and what's on the modified accrual basis or accrual basis of accounting, and it's really more of a cash flow basis is what it's doing, and so there's a reconciliation in there for certain things that are allowable for exclusion under the annual expenditure reporting. But in any case, we were able to report a clean opinion on that report as well. So as I mentioned, on the annual financial report, we issued a clean opinion on that. The opinion is on the basic financial statements, and then we disclaim an opinion on the required supplementary information. So the required supplementary information that you see in there is going to be management's discussion and analysis, where they're talking about some of the account balances, changes from year to year, and then also there is 10 years' worth of data related to the pension liability and the other post-employment benefits liability as well. We don't, so when we say we disclaim, it means that we're not giving an opinion on that information, and the reason we're not is because it's multi-year information or it's just comparative explanations that are done by management. We do read that information, though, for consistency with the basic financial statements themselves to ensure that they're properly stated. So our audit is done on a risk-based approach, so what that means is that when we perform our audit, we identify our procedures and we perform more detailed procedures on areas where we identify there could be a higher risk, a misstatement could occur. Every organization has a risk. If you don't think your organization has a risk, you probably have more than you think you do. And so these are some of the areas that we identified as higher risk. Management override of controls, this is where we look at, are there proper segregation of duties? Is there an opportunity where a member of management could override the controls that are in place and it not be detected to, you know, intentionally misstate or commit fraud? So we identify that as a higher risk, and so we design procedures to test that specifically. Revenue recognition, specifically, we're looking at existence, you know, does that revenue actually exist? Are you overstating your revenues? And we also look at cutoff, are they recorded in the right year? Financial close, so the year-end closing procedures, we look at that as a higher risk as well, and then capital assets, specifically completeness, is everything that should be capitalized getting capitalized? And so these are the areas where we specifically, you know, identify the procedures in order to address some of these risks. Doesn't mean we don't look at other areas as part of the city. We do perform maybe some detailed testing on certain areas that we don't identify as higher risk. Other areas, we may do some more basic procedures, analytics, comparisons to prior-year type balances. We also use non-financial data in order to predict what we think the account balance should be and compare it to the actual. So some of the highlights within the financial statements that you'll see, there was an increase in the general fund fund balance of about $1.7 million. That was attributed to increases in taxes of about a half a million, increases in intergovernmental revenue of about a million. You'll see a decrease in investment income and an increase in expenditure to 1.9 million, all netting to that increase in the 1.7 million. There was an operating loss in the sewer fund of a little over half a million, and you'll see an operating income in the water and sanitation funds for about .8 million and .7 million. You also see in there an increase in the ASRS pension liability of .8 million, so not a huge increase. There was a bigger increase in the police and the fire PSPRS, and I'm going to talk about those specifically, because I know that you issued bonds related to that in order to pay down that pension liability, and so I want to touch on that real quickly. So the ASRS plan is a cost-sharing plan, which means that you're allocated the liability based on your percent of the contributions. So unlike PSPRS, you can't really pay down that liability, because you're just allocated that based on your contributions. It's a big pool, and you get an allocation of that liability, so there's really not an opportunity. Unlike PSPRS, where in April, I believe that you guys issued bonds in order to fund that liability for PSPRS, that's an agent plan, and it's your own plan, so the assets are held separately for your city, so you do have the opportunity to pay that down. Since that, one of the things I wanted to note is that what you'll see in the 2022 financial statements is that the liability that's reported is always one year behind. So in the 2021 audit that we issued, it's actually the liability as of June 30, 2020. That's the standard, is that, and the reason for that is so that you can issue more timely financial statements, you generally use one year prior. So I say that because for the 2022 audit, I just want you to keep in mind that you won't necessarily see that liability as far as decreasing, because again, we're reporting the liability as of 2021, so that was prior to you actually funding that liability. So I just wanted to point that out for when you look at the 2022 financial statements. A couple of the other highlights is there was an issuance of two WIFIL loans during the year, one for about 10.6 million and another for 4.3 million. There are forgivable portions within that, which basically means it's like a grant. The remaining portion is a loan that's in there. As of June 30, 2021, there was no funds drawn on those WIFIL loans, but in talking to Gene today, it sounds like funds will be, as the projects begin moving forward, funds will be drawn down on those. And then, I already mentioned this, the subsequent event you'll see in the financial statements was that issuance of 16.4 million, which was related to funding that liability for fire and police. Single audit report, as I mentioned, there's two reports. So the Government Auditing Standards Report, we don't give an opinion, we just report on controls. And so you'll see in here, we did identify three material weaknesses. One is just the preparation of the financial statements. We are contracted to prepare the financial statements, so as part of doing that, we propose, and management approves, all of the adjusting entries necessary to convert from the fund level financial statements to government-wide. And then we also prepare all the notes to the financial statements that get approved by management. We did have some material audit adjustments related to posting some of the activity related to pension, OPEB, some of the debt activity that's in there, and we had some correcting entries as well. And then the third one was just the timeliness of issuance of the audit report, because obviously that it really should be issued by February 1, based on your bond covenants. There was a delay, as I mentioned, because of the actuarial report related to the OPEB, which in turn delayed the housing audit, which in turn delayed our audit issuance. And then it was also reported as one material matter of non-compliance, just because it is a matter of non-compliance related to the bonds themselves. And then we had no significant deficiencies at all. The single audit report, we do give an opinion on compliance related to that, and we did give a clean opinion on compliance, and we also give an in relation to opinion on the schedule of federal expenditures, so these are the schedule of all the federal funds that are spent during the year. And so I'll go over some of the highlights on that. So we had one major program that we looked at, and that was the Homeland Security Grant Program. It was about $764,000. So the city spent about 1.2 million in total federal funds, so we tested about 64% of all the federal funds that were spent by the city. As I mentioned, we issued an unmodified or clean opinion, and we had no control findings that we had reported related to the federal funds at all. So that is my presentation. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that council members have.
I don't know if I should take a question to you or the finance director or the city manager, but I have one question, and let me see. So the WIFIL, the city hasn't been submitting the invoices for reimbursement, but they will? Is that what I understood from you?
For the June 30, 2021 audit, they actually hadn't spent any funds yet.
Yeah.
So nothing was submitted for reimbursement. As far as what's occurred since July 1 of 2021 to now, I'm not sure. I'm under the assumption that they've probably been spending those funds and probably been making requests on those, but that would probably be more than it.
Okay, okay. And I have one more, and I wrote it down before I got here. So on the sanitation, I don't know if that's a question for you or city manager. We are in the red, I saw that. Sanitation, if you look at, we're in the red, 1.5 million. Is that a question for the city manager? Should I ask you, ask you what we're planning to do about that?
I don't know if I could answer that right now at this time, but maybe John might be able to have an answer for it. I don't know. Finance?
Oh, I'll repeat it. In sanitation, I noticed, oh, do you want to? Oh, okay, I know Robert's talking to you. I noticed in sanitation, there's a 1.5, we're in the red, 1.5 million. Is there a plan to reduce that or how we are going to take care of that?
So part of that has to do with our, the Viaverde. There weren't very, I don't want to say hard collections, but you know, it's been kind of lax in collecting a lot of the fees that come from Viaverde. This past year, we have started, and we have noticed our revenue has starting to go up, and that does include a lot of the sanitation. So, because over there, it's not water, it's just the sewer and the sanitation.
I like that.
Yeah, so if they're not going to pay their sewer, they're not going to pay their sanitation. But we have, we started changing that around, and so they were starting to collect a lot more.
Okay, and I have one more question. So how long has this been going on?
That we've been collecting or that it's been negative?
No, it's been negative.
Oh. Prior to this year, I mean, I can go back and look at other audits and check for you and send you guys out an email.
It was in the red last audit.
Yeah, I can go back and check.
It's been a while.
I'll go back a few more and check for you.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. That's all for now, thank you.
On the findings, I see that we have one that's been repeated twice. Oh, I'm sorry. On the findings, I noticed that we have one that has been repeated twice on 2020 and 2021, and I noticed that you wrote down some recommendations, and I just want to ask John, do we have a process in place so we can take care of this finding, so it won't happen again?
I'm sorry, could you tell me what you're referring to?
Do we have a process or so we can correct this finding, because it's been here for two years now?
I'm going to have to refer to the finding.
Okay, it's, we recommend that the city continue to evaluate its internal control process to determine if additional internal control procedures should be implemented to identify year-end closing adjustments. City management should develop procedures with the finance director for year-end closeout that can be used as a checklist in closing out June 30, 2022, that are designed to identify material adjustments that are required.
Good.
I'm sorry. General allergies, like everybody else is. So written-out procedures are, this past year has been a big learning and growing experience for the entire finance department, so those are things that we're working on. They also came down early today, Dennis and Ann did, to also work on other things with me, including how we're going to get through this year so that we can, for 2022, to make it so that we don't have these little findings. So we're working hand-in-hand with the auditors, and they're always by phone, by email, we do a lot of Zoom calls, so a lot of it is coming down between how we work with them to make sure that this coming year closes a lot smoother. It seemed to close smooth, but it can close smoother.
Councilman, let me just add, too, that that's pretty common, is we work closely with the auditor, and there's times that we write them a letter back saying, this is what we're going to do, that we work with them so they understand what the problem is, and they can help us with that. And that's very common with all cities. So, yeah, you work with your auditor, they tell you, this is kind of what we found, what can we do to address it, and they let us know, and we can write them a plan, this is what we're going to implement to take care of the problem, so next year or the next audit, it won't be another issue.
So did we, did we follow a process in the first year, 2020, and it didn't work?
Well, I wasn't here for that one. This was my first audit with the city. So that one was done through Pat and through, well, they worked, Pat worked with you guys. So I don't know what the process was prior to this year. And this year, we've been working hand-in-hand with Dennis and Ann a lot.
So just real quickly, just a couple of things. So in 2020, where that finding happened, the city hired a consultant to basically do the closeout, you know, help with that. She did a great job, but she's not here on a day-to-day basis, so there are things that are easily overlooked that we get into more detail on when we do the audit, that we identify that, oh, we need to make this adjustment, that somebody that's not here on a day-to-day basis isn't going to catch. 2021, you know, the consultant was gone, Gene was here, but now, you know, Gene had literally just come on, so I think it was missing that closeout procedure again with somebody that had the knowledge, as well as, you know, she's just coming into the city to do the closeout. So that was part of our purpose. Ann and I, Ann's with me today, she's one of my directors, we came down early today, we sat down, we met with Gene, and we sort of, you know, talked about what a checklist looked like, what a timeline looked like, and we also talked about some of the areas that have historically been maybe a little bit of a hiccup in the audit process, and what needs to be done, and what, you know, finance should be looking at in order to correct some of these things. So that was part of, part of the purpose of coming down a little bit early as well, was to go over some of these items that we identified as part of this audit that were sort of repeated from the prior as well, if that helps.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, I just have a, you know, a little bit of a, I'd like a little briefing on the other post-employment benefits. We pay as we go, and I see that you were only able to go back to 2017, and it's usually
Each year goes, it'll eventually get to 10 years, but it's not a matter of the previous years are missing, it's just that that was the year of implementation, and to put prior to the actuarial date. And so if they're, you know, if they're basing it on certain assumptions and the market significantly changed, like it has, the contributions required to that plan are probably actually more than what was being made to the plan. And so that would cause, so all of those factors combined would impact that liability itself.
Okay, thank you.
I guess we're done.
Mayor, Council, just real quick, clarification purposes, the agenda says this is fiscal year 21, 22 report, it's 20 and 21 report, just for clarification in the agenda.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And before I go, I just want to thank Gene and the finance team for all of their assistance as well. It's a lot of work on their end, you know, to get us the information as well, so we appreciate all the hard work that went into it from, actually, all the finance, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Gene. Okay, we'll go to V, presentation by Veronica Weatherby, Borderlands Theater Event, June 17 and 18, 2022, Mardi Avenue, downtown New Orleans.
Oh, this is loud, or I'm loud. I'm Veronica Weatherby. I work with Borderlands Theater, based out of Tucson, and I am an actor and a writer, and I am also part of- And I am an actor and a writer, and I am also part of their core ensemble. We are a nonprofit theater company that has been around since 1986. And this project that we're passing a flyer around for has been in the works, I want to say, four years. And we have been involved with the Nogales community. I was brought onto this project because I'm from Nogales and they wanted to have a liaison, someone that knew the town and knew people here and had a connection. So I was brought onto the project in 2020. And we started in January and the event was supposed to go up in March. And then the pandemic hit and we shut down. So we're finally getting back to bringing the event to the community. And we've been working really closely with community members, the Hilltop Gallery, La Niña Gallery. Ms. Montiel is actually on our steering committee, helping us and guiding us to the best way we can put this event on and include the entire community. And we've also been working with John Kissinger and Renee Travers on getting our permits. So I'll tell you a little bit about the event. Barrio Stories Nogales is a collection of oral histories of community members in Nogales. There's stories about ambos Nogales, Sosonora and Arizona. And they are telling the history that doesn't get written down normally and passed on to generations. So we've recorded those and turned those into theatrical productions. There will be giant puppet theater, shadow puppet theater, and projections on the buildings that are down on Morley of these people giving their oral histories and telling their, you know, family stories and stories about growing up here and just retelling the history of Nogales. We will also have a stage for live music and food vendors. And we will have an art installation with photographs from a photo contest that we're, we're putting on throughout the entire school district. And so there'll be photos and we're really trying to incorporate every member of the community that we can in this event. It's a free event and it's running June 17th and 18th in the evenings. And yeah, it'll be on the street and we're getting some street closure. We're working on permits for that now. And I think, I think that might be it. I'm trying to keep it under five minutes. We've also, we've also just been advertising a lot. So we've been working with La Maxima, K-pop in Patagonia, Radiogenie across the line. The Chamber of Commerce is a partner. We also have been partners with the Superintendent Pimera Alta Museum. They will actually remain open during events so that we can have some history bearers give presentations in there at the same time. So we're really excited about it. We're so happy that we can finally bring this to the public. We've been holding on to it and just waiting the pandemic out until the time was right. And we're finally ready in June. And I think that's it. If there's any questions about the event, these are, these are postcard printouts that are going out. We're, we're sending them out from Tucson all the way down through Sawarita and Toubac, Patagonia. We don't know how many people will come to it, but just based on previous attendance, this is our third Barrio Stories project that we've done. The other ones have been in Tucson, in Barionita, and then Barrio Viejo to revive these areas that kind of lost some of their culture and their heritage just through the process of gentrification. This one, we were granted the NEAR Town grant and we decided to use it for Nogales. So that's what brought us down here. And yeah, I'll open it up for questions if there's any. No questions?
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Be a great event.
I hope everyone can make it from here and they, they enjoy it. It's going to be a nice little party for two days.
Any event that comes to Nogales is welcome and.
Awesome, thank you so. I also left, if anyone else wanted a flyer or a map, Renee has them in the back. And if you guys need more or, or want me to come, I don't know, if you need me to talk to anyone else, I can come down. We're happy to, to communicate with everybody and just make sure it's a good turnout.
Perfect.
Cool.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
KC, update, Nogales Fire Department, operation strategies. Mr. Sergeant, Chief Sergeant.
This one right here?
Yes, sir.
All right. Jeff Sergeant, Fire Chief. This is basically just a quick update on what's going on. We have a lot of irons in the fire at this point and kind of wanted to get, keep you guys and the council up to date on what's going on. First thing is they finished our ISO evaluation. That had been delayed for a couple of years. They were supposed to do it in what would have been, I think, 18. But they had had a new fire chief come in then. And so they were, then they brought me in in 19 or in 17 and then 19. And then COVID hit and everything slowed down. So they were several years behind in doing the evaluation. But our evaluation results stated a four, which is really, really good. That we didn't go down, which is, I mean, going down would be going higher on the chain of numbers. It would be nice if we were a three or a two or a one, but we didn't go in the wrong direction, let's put it that way. Areas to improve is our water supply. We're hoping that with, with loans, we can see how much of the fire hydrants that we have that are kind of in question are in those areas and will be fixed during that process. Also, we have a challenge in the via verdi area that we need to work out as well. I mean, that's not our infrastructure and there aren't very many hydrants. So that is one thing that can help improve our score for the next evaluation. Training, we're already working on. We have a electronic training format called Target Solutions, which crews do training on monthly. We also started monthly, what's called minimum company standard drills. Those have been opened up regionally, so we do have other departments coming to them. And then the burn tower is currently slated to be repaired at the end of the month. And then we're sending out in next fiscal year, people to get certified to actually burn inside of it. And so we'll have that up and running and that'll help with training. Medical priority dispatch is something we need to look at. Not this fiscal year coming up that we're talking about this budget. We're still working on the infrastructure of getting MDTs and the fire trucks. That'll be something that Roy and I had talked about briefly before, waiting on the results of the evaluation. Bringing forward that to council for not this year coming up, but the following one. And what medical priority dispatch is, is pre-arrival instructions and questions. We're still kind of old school as far as dispatch goes and not necessarily giving specific instructions that are controlled by a medical director and those kind of things. That takes training and infrastructure and cash. And so that's on our agenda for 2024, but not this year coming up. Thanks to the water department and the crews that tested 800 fire hydrants this year. Mayor and council for the tenders and the burn tower. And then Jeff, who is at a class right now, was the city point person. And he spent a ton of time putting together documents and tracking stuff down to get through that evaluation. So all, pretty good news there. I mean, there's stuff obviously we can work on. We'll have a detailed report as soon as I get the IT part of it figured out with the ISO people. I'm still trying to get my account up and running with them to get the detailed report. But we did get the letter that said we were a four in four X. The next thing we're starting to focus on is we're, we have a lot of operational stuff moving right now. So we're moving kind of into a prevention role over the next fiscal year. What we're currently doing is monthly pre-plans. Jeff doesn't, a lot of business inspections, both new and then if there's a hazard or a complaint. And then also we started an OXBOX program that, or we're implementing an OXBOX program that was started before Jeff and I both took our roles. But it's basically a universal key program, so we're not having to kick indoors in businesses like we used to have to. Like there's a key, we have a master key to get it out. We open the door and it's not costing us money or injuries of kicking stuff down. Things we're working on for this year, Fire Prevention Week is in October. Up until now, we haven't really hit the schools. One of the things that a lot of other departments and districts do is they go out and do what's called mini musters, which is like bucket brigades and those kind of things and get the kids interested in fire service and fire protection and prevention. So that's our target for this year. Part of what we're going to be using for that is Maida, because we're getting her freed up some hours because we're getting on the time clock and she won't be having to do as much manual payroll entry stuff. So she'll have some, she'll have some free time to help out with that. And then what you'll see probably next month, but maybe July, depending on all the paperwork, is update to building and fire codes. That's going to be Sam and then Jeff, like I said, is at a class, is going to be bringing that forward. The big thing for the fire is we have to match what the state fire marshal has for codes. And they upgraded, and so we have to upgrade to match them. One of the things that we really want to emphasize this year is the Wildland Urban Interface Codes. That picture is one of the things that Jeff implemented. And what it is, is it's, that's a picture of my phone. If you could see real close, there's a little icon that's orange, that's me sitting at my desk. But the yellow things are the hydrants and any person in the department who has a smartphone has access to that information. And so you can see if the hydrant's in service, what its flow rate is. So when we get a call, they have real-time data. And when you go down to the bottom, you'll see the green dots and those are pre-plans. So crews have gone out to the, the business, looked, found where the shut-offs are, found where any hazardous materials are stored. And so anybody going for a call can click that, it'll pop open a PDF on their phone. And they have that information in their hand, which is a huge step forward. And again, you know, Jeff and the crews have done a ton of work getting that implemented. So on the Wildland Urban Interface kind of discussion, this is some of the reasons why we're talking about it, some of the reasons why we're going to be bringing that code forward. If you look, that black scar there is the Meadow Hills fire from last year. Currently, this was the aerial shot of the cemetery fire. You know, you can get a wildland fire anywhere. And these are just some of the reasons why we're talking about this issue. You can see how close we were to the houses in Meadow Hills. And now we have, all the tankers have moved out of Nogales and they're right off screen down there on the bottom where you'll see those like three white buildings right straight at the bottom. They've moved into just outside the city in a lot that's really close to Meadow Hills. And so we have that problem now, but really close up there. So some of the things that we're doing as far as the Wildland Urban Interface stuff, so we can avoid what happened in California is public education. Once the code's in place, we'll do the education and enforcement after the education. And then there's several options to deal with removal of fuel from our property. But because we're kind of in a weird spot where we just got the new city manager, we want to run all that by him and let him give us some guidance on his theories on our, our crazy ideas before we get to the budget meeting. So that's why it's there, but you know, Mr. Dickey needs a chance to see all that stuff before I get up here and say crazy things. And so that's that subject. Now, a couple of other things, I call it miscellaneous but important. The ladder truck, it seems like we just bought it, right? It's, it's 12 years old. We're spending a ton of money keeping it operational, which is not uncommon. Ladder trucks normally, like ours, cost dollars per mile to run. I mean, ours is several dollars per mile every time we drive it anywhere. We spent about 30K over the last two years fixing it. We just had a crack that we had to have replaced, have fixed and have the ladder retested, which it passed, so it's all good. But it's just something to keep in mind as we're moving through, because the replacement time's going to come quicker than we think. Current pricing as of 2020 on HGAC, it was 1.2 million for the same truck. And so, you know, I, I only bring it up now because it's not a this budget year thing, but we need to figure out, especially with the bond discussion that we had last time about how it's going to be lean for some years, what we're going to do about that coming up. You know, I mean, it's, it's a, it is a good tool when we need it. It's not a tool that we use a ton, but when we need it, it's super helpful. The other discussion is the regional approach. This will date back to a conversation with the mayor, John and I, about staffing two Novembers ago. We started out with the first EMT Academy that was shared with Río Rico. And then from there, it's just kind of snowballed into the, into the current thing that we have right now, where we're actually co-teaching a regional academy with a bunch of different people, including Toubac and Snoyda. But you'll see other trucks in the city as part of that, because now we're responding with each other a lot more fluidly, like the warehouse fire, we had the air conditioner fire up there two weeks ago. We actually had the Río Rico chief who was helping Jeff with command there, helping him with some roof stuff. I mean, it was, it was really cool to see that we had Río Rico and Toubac. So if you see other trucks driving around, that's part of the plan. Our trucks will go help them, they'll come help us. We've also had the possible IGA discussions, so intergovernmental agreements about inspections and investigations, training, repairs of vehicles. And when that says EDT level, it's emergency vehicle technician. So that's above and beyond standard repairs. So it's not chassis related, that's pump related, things that you have to have special certifications to fix. And then we're even talking about, is there some kind of an option for a reserve pool to deal with staffing issues? Because everybody in Santa Cruz County is hiring right now. Part of the, another success story was we just had a driver operator training class that we had 16 of our own people and people from Toubac and Río Rico. We just did our first regional EVOP class, which is just simply driving emergency vehicle class. Jeff is an instructor for that. He does a lot of stuff for us. And between him and a Río Rico instructor, we, we taught for the, for the region or the county. And then one of the things that we did from there is we decided, hey, look, we're teaching this class. Let's look at standard operating procedures. And we found that it lined up fairly well. We just needed to make a couple of adjustments to ours, and so we're working on that. So we have a similar driving policy across the county. So when we're teaching the class, we're not telling them, hey, this is the requirement here and that's there. And then Chris, one of our other battalion chiefs, is working on a, a supply purchasing, kind of an RFP to go out to see if we can get better pricing regionally on that. But that's just an update of what everything's going on right now. The main things to take away from that is somewhere in the future, we got to come up with probably closer to 1.5 million by then for a ladder truck replacement. And codes are coming up in the next couple of months. That's really important to us for, as far as enforcement of helping us clean up some of that stuff around the city so we don't have fires right up against houses. So that is all I have.
Hey, well, Chief, thank you very much for the update on everything. And I, I really want to thank you for the work you're doing and everybody, the battalion chiefs and all, especially all the training that you're doing with the new recruits you have there.
Well, you guys are getting your money's worth out of the battalion chief.
I think you're going to have a bunch of, you know, good employees there. You know, with this new, new recruits and the future of, of training and that tower, that'll be important for you to get that going too, fire tower. But yes, thank you very much for all the work you're doing, Chief. Yes, go ahead.
I just want to mention that I want to congratulate the fire department and all the fire and EMTs, because today's National Fire Fighters Day. So just want to mention that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Financial monthly report. John, Mr. Dickey, who wants to get this? John, Mr. Dickey, who wants to get this?
We're going to have our finance director, Gene, give this update today. Thank you, Gene.
Um, in front of you is the finance report. It's the same one that you were emailed, um, last Friday. So this one is through the end of March. Let me put my glasses on so I can see. Okay, so through March, we should be at about 75% of our budget. Um, so as we go through, you'll see where we stand. With our general fund for table A, you'll see that our revenues are at 21,623,318, which is 85%. And then our expenditures are at 18,235,993, which is 65%. Um, you'll notice on the bottom of all these charts again are this year compared to last year. So you can see where we stand that way. Um, if you move on to table B, that is our sales tax, our local sales tax. And for the month of March, we collected 932,864. It is less than last year, but you'll notice in my report that part of February of 21 was recorded in March of 21. So March of 21 looks like we collected a whole lot. Part of it was actually from February. Um, but you'll look, we are still 1,368,750 over this point last year that has been collected. If you move on to table C, that is our general fund by department, the expenditures. You'll see we still have a few that are highlighted. Um, they're dropping closer to where we should be. They're just highlighted because they're over the 75%. But we're getting fewer departments. Of course, um, the animal control is always up there because of the, um, the budgeting that happened last year, which will be corrected this coming year. If you move on to table D, this is our HERF and our overweight funds. Our revenues collected for HERF at this point are 1,858,226, that's 75%. And overweight fees collected are 233,679, and that's actually 133% of the budget. And if you look at the expenditures, we have spent for HERF 2,48,212, which is 52%. And for the overweight fees, it was 867,418, which is 44%. If you move on to table E, this is our sewer. Sewer has collected 2,657,183, which is 70%. And our expenditures are at 1,763,126, which is 73%. If you move on to table F, it's our water fund. We have collected 2,900,530, that's 75%. And our expenditures are at 3,447,576, which is 67% of the budget. And if we move on to table G, that's our sanitation. We have collected 2,151,196, that's at 70% of our budget. And we have spent 1,762,910, which is 55% of the budget. And again, all of the charts had this year compared to last year on the bottom. Are there any questions on that part of the report? Okay, then the final part of the report is just, um, the water and sewer, the delinquent accounts. We currently have 6,134 active utility accounts in the city of Nogales. We have 414 of them that are on contracts. Um, the total for the contracts is 153,228.44. This is actually down 18,425.96 from last month. We still have 121 accounts in the Valle Verde area that, um, that are not, like, they can't be shut off because we can't shut them off. Um, and that totals 295,672.05. Um, the amount has increased a little bit, but we have four accounts that were past due that are now current. And the second page just shows the same four businesses that I always kind of put on there. Um, the good news is the second one has completely paid in full, including their contract that was behind, and they are current. Um, the first one is current, including paying their contract monthly. Um, the third one, as we all know, has court dates now pending on that one. Um, and the fourth one has now come current and so she is paying her current bill monthly. Um, for the final part, for the employee payouts, we had four employees in April. We had three that were from police totaling 8,428.27 for sick and vacation hours. And we had one from housing, which was 4,345.27, also for vacation and sick hours. Are there any questions on that? Wonderful, well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Number six, orders. A consideration and possible action of order 2022-05-030. An order of the council of the city of Nogales, Arizona, authorizing the city manager to award a contract to Enova Engineering, Inc. for Camino del Sol Water Replacement and Paving Project for the amount not to exceed 618,854. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. B, consideration, possible action of order 2022-05-031. Order of the council of the city of Nogales, Arizona, approving an intergovernmental agreement with Santa Cruz County for election services. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. C, consideration, possible action of order 2022-05-032. An order of the council of the city of Nogales, Arizona, appointing Robert Gilliland as presiding magistrate and approving an employment service agreement. Discussion. Mr. Massey, do you have anything on that?
Mayor, members of-
One minute, sir. No, I'm joking, I'm joking.
I get paid by that.
By the word, right? Mr. Mayor, members of council, we do have Robert Gilliland here tonight. And I think you've all been notified that if the motion that has been moved and seconded, then we'll have us wearing in on Monday at 9:00 AM.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. Uh, on item D, uh, on orders, um, I'm making a motion to table that because I didn't get the return cause from the, the, the person that, uh, I was going to appoint. But, uh, second, all right, all right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then table. Okay, number seven, mayor and councils report on current events. I'll start with my list here. April 8th, attended a meeting with Rio Rico High School ROTC. April 12th, attended a meeting with Byte and Charlie Cutler for Arts by National Conference Plant that will take place at the Museo de Arte de Nogales Sonora. April 13th, attended a meeting with Senator Christian Sinema. Uh, April 14th, participated with the Santa Cruz County EMT Fire Academy Completion Event, great event. April 15th, attended a NIDOC meeting. April 19th, attended Santa Cruz Valley Heritage Area Exhibit Discussion Project. Uh, same date, participated in a Cronkite News interview on the leadership between ambos nogales. April 21st, attended a meeting, uh, PEP loans, uh, also. April 22nd, Earth Day Celebration, Clean City, Healthy City at the Dog Park. April 23rd, attended Dominguez Festival. April 26th, Fourth of July Planning Meeting. April 27th, Cordoba Memorial at Villas Market. April 28th, in tribute to Earth Day, we participated in a couple of activities to celebrate. First, we met with Tony Santa Cruz at the Dog Park with tree augers to prepare the park for planting trees. And on April 29th, we planted the trees. First Lady participated as well as, uh, Robert, Renee, anyone else that attended. And we had, I think we have one voice cop that attended. April 29th, participated in the Cero Estres Maratón Press Conference, joined with other community leaders and organizations. April 30th, Fiesta de las Flores and butterflies, Cero Estres Maratón, over 400 participants participated. And May 1st, Jeremy Britton Memorial Car Show that took place at Nogales High School. Vice Mayor.
I'm only going to report the Fiesta de las Flores event. Uh, special thanks to mayor, city council, police and fire department. Uh, very special thanks to Robert Thompson. Thank you, where are you, Robert? I mean, I'm sorry I called you all day and you were there and like always, thank you very much. Also Yuri, Renee, uh, all the city personnel. Also, I want to thank, uh, Mr. Urias, battalion chief, uh, the Nogales International, the Cultural Arts Committee and the Consulado Mexicano. Thank you, Kathy in particular, for helping me, for helping us decorate, uh, the butterflies, the stage. And I mean, it was really a hard job, thank you. And also Mr. Bonillas for helping me with the station, the coordination of the station. I really appreciate it. That's it.
Thank you very much. Councilman Diaz.
Okay, we'll start off, uh, on the, on April 7th, on April 7th, I, uh, along with, uh, the mayor and other members of, of the city staff, we participated in a, an R Can donation at the Instituto Mexicano el Seguro Social de Nogales Sonora. The brand new hospital over by the airport out there. There was a press release and a conference and the doctors and medical staff there had breakout sessions. And I'd like to thank, uh, Chris Renteria and all his staff for going out there and making this donation and also the Circles of Peace. They were, they're very active in, in all these, uh, programs and, and it was, it was a great event and it was in Nogales Sonora, Mexico. Uh, on the 14th, I attended the EMT Fire, uh, Rio Rico graduation. And on the 20th of April, I had the great honor and privilege of installing and administering the oath to the new executive board of the BFW post 2066 and also our brand new auxiliary, uh, headed by Madam President Carino. I, I, I got to install and give him the oath of, of, uh, the office. So, uh, congratulations, thank you very much.
I'm a private now.
On, uh, on the 23rd, uh, attended a, it was like a breakout session at the Borderland Theater and Morley Avenue where, uh, they talked about tree conservation and, and new laws in Mexico considering, uh, the protection of trees. If you cut a tree down, you, you have to have permission to do it and you have to replace it with, uh, five different trees, right? So, so they, they're getting pretty strict on protecting their environment, their forest and, and all, all the things like that. We, we also did an outdoor movie at the same time. It was very nice, very interesting. Uh, April 28th, Dominguez Festival, the 27th, uh, the dedication of, uh, the memorial for, uh, Chuy Cordova. Uh, the 30th, attended the Cinco de Mayo event. It was a great event, there was a lot of people, a lot of vendors and it, it, it was a great event. And, uh, thank you, Vice Mayor, you put on a great event and all your staff and everybody that helped out, congratulations. And on the 1st of May, attended the Jerry Britton First Memorial Car Show. And that, that was a great event, there was a lot of people there, there was trophies given, uh, beautiful cars. They were, it was, it was really nice, we had a good time there. Okay, and that's all I got for right now, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman?
This is my first one, so I'm going to jump right in. Also attended the EMT, uh, graduation for the regional academy. Uh, the presentation of the Reyna's here at the city hall, the Dominguez Memorial, uh, Boys and Girls Club Carnasada, which is one of their biggest fundraisers and a great event. Uh, the Fiesta de las Flores and the Officer Chuy Cordova Memorial, as well the Jeremy Britton Car Show. All these events had a lot of people and shows that communities back out and I was really glad to see that.
Thank you very much. Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I also attended the EMT firefighter ceremony, the Dominguez Festival. Uh, it was, uh, you know what, uh, it was the first time that I actually saw the Dominguez Festival with a lot of people. It was, it was, it was, uh, great. I, I bumped into friends of mine that were in jazz band with me back in my high school, uh, years. Uh, but it was a great success. Uh, I also attended the, uh, Chuy Cordova Ceremony. I was involved also with the Dog Park, uh, planting trees. And, uh, went to the marathon, um, race press conference. Uh, was there at seven in the morning to launch the actual marathon, uh, on Saturday morning. And, uh, I, which, uh, I'd like to, uh, congratulate, uh, Councilwoman Melendez for, for a very, uh, very well organized event. Uh, I, for the first time, you know, I saw the community, uh, started going, going out and, uh, to the events here in the city. Um, so that's all I have for today. And before I forget, uh, Mr. Dick and Mr. Kissinger, I spoke with, uh, Mr. Gabriel Bonillas. Uh, he's a director of Omapas. If you can please look into, uh, they, they want to sort of, uh, get an early start on us, uh, servicing with the water. Okay?
Thank you very much, Councilman.
Uh, before I make my report, Mayor, I just want to get out of the box a little bit and, and just make a, a recognition. Today, around noon, I had a, uh, an emergency. Uh, we were at the Planet Fitness Gymnasium and my wife started feeling kind of sick. So, uh, I started walking her out, you know, I was going to take her to the hospital. And as I was going out and trying to put her in my car, uh, you know how they say that God works in, in mysterious ways? You know, I happened to run into, uh, uh, battalion chief, uh, Fernando Urias was sitting right there. And, uh, I asked him for help. So he immediately took my wife to, uh, to his, uh, vehicle and administered some oxygen and started doing some, uh, manual vitals. And at the same time, he called the, the ambulance. So in, in, in a few minutes, the, the ambulance got there and they started performing their, their duties. And, uh, I'm very grateful to, uh, EMT Delgado and his crew. I, I can't remember everybody's name, but, uh, I'm going to make it, uh, uh, personal to go and visit them and thank them in person for, for all their, their good work and professionalism. You know, I truly appreciate it from the bottom of my heart, the work that they do. And I'm very grateful and, uh, thankful that these, uh, brave men and women work for our fire department and they perform very professional. And, uh, I also want to thank, uh, the city manager, Mr. Dickey, because he got ahold of me immediately and, uh, he was very, uh, compassionate about, uh, condition and, and, and health of my wife. So, thank you, Mr. Dickey.
Is everything okay, Councilman?
Everything is fine, she's at home right now, she's recovering and she's stable and she's, uh, doing fine. Okay, so, uh, my, my thanks, well, thanks to Mr. Urias and, and the rest of the fire department that was here. and, and the rest of the fire department that was here and performed very professionally.
Gracias.
Okay, and, and now for my report, uh, um, I attended the firefighter EMT, uh, sort of like, uh, training, uh, back in Techea Park, uh, that was back in April, beginning of April. And they, you know, we witnessed how they go through some rough, uh, trainings and even though they were having fun, you know, it was still hard work. Then on April 14th, I also attended the EMT firefighter, uh, graduation in Rio Rico. That was a very nice, uh, ceremony to have for them. And finally, uh, on April 30th, I attended the Fiesta de las Flores, which is a very nice, uh, event, you know, I congratulate everybody who was involved in the, in the organization of this, uh, of this event. You know, it was, it's so good to see all those people there, the community come together again. They were all happy, dancing and singing. It was very nice. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I too attended a lot of these, um, events that happened this last month. And, um, want to thank everybody that organized all the events in the community. And it's nice to see the community out there again. Um, and today is International Firefighters, Firefighters Day. And I'd like to thank all the firefighters out there in the community for keeping us safe. Um, and a great story, um, and glad that, uh, your wife is doing great. Um, and also in honor of Small Business Week, which is very, very important to me, like it is for everybody here, because I believe small businesses are the beating heart of the community. And I'd like to, um, say thank you for, for the support. And also hopefully the community continues to promote and, and shop, uh, these small business, um, stores across our communities. And that's about it. And also welcome and thank you, Mr. Dickey, for meeting with us. I know I met with you already. Um, I, I embraced that opportunity and I'm sure that the directors and the rest of us here embraced it too. So welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Future agenda items? Go ahead.
I have one. Um, an update, Mr. Dickey, on annexation.
I've been, I've been told that the annexation, we're going to kind of hold off right now.
Okay.
For, for a little bit, um, kind of just look at things. I, I know there's someone that's doing a study for us.
Yeah.
I'm not sure exactly who that is, I think council does. So we're just waiting to get some information, but at this time, we're not actively pursuing the annexation. Staff isn't-
That's good to know.
Right now.
That's good to know.
Okay.
Thank you for letting-
And, and then since I'm talking, just real quick, and you're going to talk about future agenda items, the next meeting is May, no, what is it, June 1st, which is follows the Memorial Day weekend. I don't know if council wanted to still hold it that day or move it to, uh, the next week. Just putting that out there for you guys to consider.
Think about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
Uh, an update on the, on the, on some of the lighting around the city. Uh, I'll, I'll get, uh, get with Mr. Kissinger and, and point out some of the places where some lighting is, is needed. And, uh, so he can, uh, give us an update on that. And also I know that, uh, there's a bidding process for the Old Tucson Road. If, I don't know if, by the next week, uh, by the next meeting, we'll have some type of a updated report on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright. Somebody write that down? John, did you write it down? You're a good man, John. I don't know what we would do without you. Alright. With that, um, motion to adjourn. He's adjourned.